The. Agenda for the. August twenty. Any uh, correcting or amendments to the agenda?
Yes.
Karen?
Make a motion.
Second. Make a motion, we have a second, any comments or questions? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay. For the minutes from July twenty seven.
Well then, speaking of.
Any motions on that? You. Second. We have a motion. We have a second.
Yeah.
Any comments or questions?
No.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Marshall Square Shopping Center. Land Development.
It's here.
Are they done?
It really just plans metal.
Hmm.
I think they have the review, but it's on the agenda for plans metal, so.
Hmm.
Sometimes they don't.
Yeah.
So just a, a motion to accept. Uh, is it complete?
It was complete last week.
It was?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, I thought there was a problem.
And we did a review.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, all good, all the month to work on. Was that all the month to work on?
Yeah. So, uh.
Did you not accept it last time?
No, we just, we didn't get this last time, I don't think, we got just the sketch plan, right?
No, I thought we had this, we, we had some certain notes last week. No, we didn't. Uh, that is.
No, I think we have the plan, yeah, accept the plan.
Oh, yeah.
And it's under the wrong agenda, oh, placed on the agenda.
Oh.
There we go.
I love to watch that.
Who made the motion that we accept this agenda?
Can we go back, set and amend it?
Yes.
Yeah. I make a motion, we amend. The agenda.
Okay.
To move the Marshall Square Shopping Center land development to under, to under plan reviews.
Okay. Well.
Okay.
I don't understand.
Second. Somebody need a second.
Sorry.
Okay, Nick, second.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Yeah.
Any comments or questions, that if you're good with this?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Yeah, that's when we accept.
Any comments or questions, any of us?
Hmm.
Uh, if not, uh, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Alright, so now we move. The Marshall Square.
You did a reviewer, yes.
Yeah, no, it's your discussion, we have time, we could table it. It's only been thirty.
Did they indicate whether or not they were going to, or they?
Yeah, they, they, I, according to the email that we got, when Ben sent this out, they were supposed to give you.
Hmm, okay. Alright, so why don't we, why don't we vote in the, the table?
Yeah.
And, uh, if they come in before the end of the meeting, we can always. Uh, revise that, how's that sound? Yeah, that's, okay.
It's fine.
Okay, motion to table?
Yeah.
Nick?
That's a motion.
Second, a motion, very second. Any comments or questions?
Because we're like thirty days in, right? Yeah.
Can, can we just? Discuss for one minute with Mike, maybe, did Ben give you any indication what the hot topic were? Uh, just, just to know where we're running at. I know there's a lot, but it's, I see a lot of handicap parking and.
There's, I think there is, uh, I, I think the highlights are really, there's. Uh, it's with knowing, uh, comments that if they clean the, um, the self storage uses, they conditional use. Um. So, uh, can I guess there's some question, because there were a number of, I think, asked, uh. First of all. A couple of past, I think, digital use hearings involved in this property. So, the, which, which uses are out there currently? Are they allowed to be out there, are they not forming, are they, and, yeah, I think it's just a lot of questions on the uses. And primarily, did we propose use of self-storage as conditional use? Um, a lot of the other comments, I think. Are comments that can be cleaned up.
The, the used car, the entry for the gas station, the, you know.
Yeah.
That a lot of, a lot of it wasn't followed from last time, from the land development.
That's what I'm saying.
You know, yeah.
A lot of.
What property is this?
Yeah.
The one across. Uh, the one where the movie theater was made after?
Yeah.
I now remember the time for the last one.
What I don't understand, um, is like this, this building already exists.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, on page five, we're talking about minimum of one, this is a shade tree planted for every fifty feet of light. Minimum of one to sit to a shade tree for every ten new parking places, and. I don't think there's any new parking available that they can do.
Yeah, but were the, Ben, when they did, did they do what they were opposed to under the previous plan?
Well, they explained about that, it was, it was a landscape plan with that.
Yeah.
The other thing, Mark, we talked about how, um, if the, the parking. I, I don't remember the exact numbers, but it is an issue of the number of parking spaces. But what we talk about all the theater is, is the night.
Yeah.
Event, and from the retail, it's a day event, and you could share that parking, and made a hundred percent sense.
Yeah.
To do that.
And we made that mod, or, you know, we, we accepted under those conditions, that even though the parking wouldn't. It was based on the square footage, the parking would support that, and the, the case could still be made for self-storage as well. But someone has to. Address that in that manner, right, not just leave it open, I think that's what you're saying, uh, leave it open, so that. We're saying this is okay, and you could turn that into a Chuck E. Cheese tomorrow, you know?
Right.
If it, if it, it's like thirteen spaces. Oh, in the back.
Along the front.
Oh, is it?
Where they don't unload. How would they go unload drinks and chocolate?
What's part of this, is that you, you'll show where a truck, truck. Emergency vehicle.
Emergency vehicles.
You know, when this was gonna be a movie theater, we had a discussion about the lights in the back.
Yeah.
With the neighbors, so now this will not require lights in the back.
No, I think it will.
Oh, well, because there's.
Because that's where the self-storage entrance and stuff.
It's gonna be in the back.
Yeah, in the back.
And how would that affect the neighbors, but that was a big conversation we had, and it was gonna be a theater.
But if that's a conditional use, maybe we make that, you know, seven AM to nine PM or something.
Exactly. It's a good, that's why self-storage is conditional use.
Hmm. But, yeah, but I guess there are, even for the last time they did this, there were a lot of conditions on it, right?
Right. Right.
So it'd be nice to. I honestly can't remember what those are.
It's. You know, it's probably. It, I think it might still be available, the, the old land development for this.
I looked it up.
Little movie theater, I mean, I.
Yeah, but, I mean, Jim, his general comments were part of that.
Oh, they do.
That this won't be relevant to a movie theater conditional use.
Hmm.
So it's gonna be a new conditional use.
Yeah. Right.
Or an amended conditional use.
There's a residence on there, that's.
Oh, so, but there is the three thirty oh four conditional use for shopping center notes, so there are some that are relevant, just because it's still a shopping center, right?
Hmm.
Oh, and he does cover some of them, so it looks like he did go, I mean, he did go over those that were relevant.
Hmm.
And what I read at home, is this also going to be that it's not facing the inner parking lot, it's gonna have some retail store there?
Spreading for the theaters.
Yeah, if you're on one eye, looking straight.
Then there will be retail.
Sure.
And storage will go in that.
Then.
It's nice.
It's like a loading dock around back, though, meaning it's a, a step.
Yeah.
Down by the thing.
And so that's why I don't know what he's gonna have, if he's gonna regrade it, which would, you know.
Right.
Cause it does.
Still do.
Yeah. Yeah. Our gas station's not permitted in C one?
Or maybe I haven't read them, just notes at the beginning, let's say. Fuel pumps, existing gas tanks and propane tanks, fuel storage is not permitted in C one district.
How could it be possible on a, in a commercial zoning?
I mean, maybe it could be conditional, while surprised that it's listed as, I mean, and I'd be interested to see. Just from my own education.
Right. Right, that's where, that's where it belongs, I mean, that's.
Yeah.
Missing.
And it could, I mean, maybe it was just misraised.
Additional.
Yeah, that is conditional, meaning that it's not permitted by right, but.
Or it should be conditional use actually.
But actually, I think, I mean, moving back in like two thousand and eight, or. I'm sure it's checked since then, but I think we had a lot of Ps, but we got to the C one district, you know what I mean, so. We had a lot of permitted by rights, I know. Too many probably, but.
So, so table this, or are we okay doing that?
We didn't, we did a motion and seconded them.
Right, yeah, this was just in the public.
Yep, so, this was the comment.
This is the comment.
I just wanted to make sure we had our ducks in a row before they.
Okay.
They should be sending a response letter for the next meeting, so if you get that, they can send that right out to us.
Uh.
What's that?
Then we can even have more of our ducks in a row.
Exactly, I mean, if. Alright, we'll just, we're, we're motion is second, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Alright. Um, personal care, but. Vicki, that was tabled, is that correct?
Yeah, let it stay. Everybody has a, uh, a move, a way to extend. Definitely, it wasn't definitely now, thank you. Because there was no way that, because it was dated for the, um. The thirtieth of, uh, September, and there was no way.
Uh-huh.
So they get their. Um.
Right.
And that stuff.
So are they? Asking for an extension?
They tabled.
Well, they were requesting it be tabled, and they submitted, uh, next, oh.
Oh, wait.
October, yeah.
Something. Yeah, because we don't technically give extension, I guess, we just need them to give us an exception. Yeah.
Okay.
Do we have to accept that, or do we have?
I think you should, you should table it, it's on your agenda, they requested to be tabled, but you should do the same motion you did for the last one.
Okay, let's, a motion to the table.
Okay.
Make a motion, uh, second, or present, Carrie, your.
Yeah. Or, next verse, he gets motion, his second. Okay.
Comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Yeah.
Thank you. Uh, next is, uh. Other reviews. And bill recommendations, proposed amendment to the Little Smithville Council zoning agreements. This is the solar energy.
And I do have one here, um, my notes, your comment. Um, Bob, about, uh. Is it article three, two, F, two, B, F, two? I didn't feel favorite number. Let's see. It's on page six. Yeah, page six. Two. Should be gravel or paved access. It was just a typo.
That's, okay.
I was at a gravel, uh.
Oh, yeah.
The very first, that you have that number in mention.
Right, well, um, it, another comment I had on this first, um, so, so this is putting all. Large solar projects in, in the I district, yeah, I district. And. I, I don't. I, I, I don't see any reason why it couldn't go in C one and C two. But there might be a reason for that, so. What, what, what's the thinking on that one, why, why did it end up only in the I? In the industrial?
We have a good sir?
We, I mean, the thought was, when we put this together. That we wanted to have something in place where it can be put. And nobody wanted to see it on two oh nine.
Hmm.
Is that?
If you're in C one.
That's in preparation for maybe warehouse becoming in too, right?
Well, that, I mean, that's another topic, but. Nevermind, so.
You know, it's pretty large, it's one man, and large, right?
It's gonna be big, so you're gonna have.
I mean.
C two. On C one, you're gonna see it from. Two oh nine, more than likely. Is what I'm thinking of, we need parts of this bigger first thing.
If you get a chance, maybe one man, that's, that's a big. Uh, I was looking at it. In terms of. Um, no, it's, it's a low impact, once it's built, things. Hardly any truck traffic, there isn't any noise. Doesn't make it exposed. Hopefully. That is something that. Wouldn't be a bad thing to have. And. Our I district is pretty small.
Hmm.
Um.
But from what I understand, there's been interest in putting one there.
In the I?
Yeah.
Oh. If there's a, uh. Every, every day, there's articles on. On. Solar farms coming in, and. Warehouses involved in some of them, and, and some of the other, you know, wood manufacturers.
Yeah, they just put them on the.
No, they're, they're talking about the next harvest, they take the harvest of trees out and don't replant trees.
Hmm.
Put in solar panels instead.
Hmm.
You know? But there's the whole thing about the infrastructure too, how do you get the, the power lines to. You know, into the grid. So.
Well, I think of, of there, they probably do have the. Where with all, with the power lines that go through there to. Somehow get it into the grid where it needs to go.
Right.
Where I is at, up there. The one, the one thing we did that it's really pared it down, because originally it had a lot of language about the accessory.
Hmm.
But the state already has the accessory covered. We're, you know, we're, we're not really worried about the guy who wants to put rooftop ones on it.
Right, right.
Those, those regulations are already out there, we didn't wanna, you know, we don't want to duplicate it for, make any, for strict. Those rules.
Right.
We'll follow the building code, and it comes to that, but the, the, uh, principal. Use ones were the ones that we wanted to make sure we had it. Some. Lord, it's fine.
Right, there was a guy there in Smithfield Township, right, right, like the, where the old, uh, two oh nine before the bypass was.
Hmm.
Someone had an office there for a while, looked like he was gonna do a solar farm, maybe not there, but they was trying to put solar farms in Poconos. Was that like ten years ago?
He was forward thinking.
Hmm.
Right.
I think there was some catch with like credits or something, he was trying to cash in on that, because I don't know if they ever actually ended up building any, I know he got an office and a sign there, so.
Hmm. Well.
There is actually, one right over on, in New Jersey, if you go north on two oh six, I don't know what the township is, but it's Township Bone.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, you can see it kind of, it's in farm country.
Hmm.
Or what was farm country. And.
Right.
But you can still have it as an agricultural use, you can use goats to trim your grass. But I have a dozen goats in there, and they can. You don't have to worry about the grass.
I mean, I mean, that's to, to Bob's point, though, just keeping it in.
Aye.
If it's such low impact, right, you have large slots of land where it would be. You know, even other types of, you know, probably not maybe commercial, because we have that unlimited, and I don't think people would wanna pay. Well, you'd have to pay to put it in a commercial district too, but. There are other large areas where we just be. Something that sits there, you know?
Right, something else to keep in mind, I mean, as you look at the zoning, when C one does. Travel as far back as Lower Lakeview, for instance, the Pine Echo Lake. And it's, and it's a pretty large area, and so your. The potential to be off of two oh nine is pretty, pretty large. On both sides, actually.
Yeah, but I'm saying, like, even rural residential, which you don't have anymore, I guess, when you have. Rural residential, but you know, like, even some of those areas. Conservated, you know what I mean, like, if it, as long as you're not taking down trees to put it out, but if you have, have those fields in those areas, I don't.
Right. Right.
See what it's. You know? In that thing, but, I mean, I guess if this is just meant to kind of be a, a, a start, and we'd see if there's interest then.
Well, if somebody doesn't agree that. I has enough space to do what they wanna do, I mean, they can always. Approach the board on what. Their plans are. And I understand, you know, that there is some seat back. Towards hell, though, but when you open it to C one, you open it to all C.
Yeah.
It's gonna be a conditional.
Right, right.
Because everyone was, we had the conversation about even I. Postured to the two oh nine, and we were all against that, see the fact there. And so, well, we have this, which is pretty good, something to have on plan, let's be honest, that comes through.
But you all know, it's a result of having nothing on.
Yeah, oh, yeah, it just pops out.
It'll go wherever they wanna put it.
Yeah. Yeah, at least this way you get to start a conversation with you.
And that's terrible use, I mean, really, it's not.
Yeah.
You know, again, it doesn't. There's no truck traction at this time, so, it's not like. Mining.
It's gotta be done, right, it's not like they can have the. Mirrors shining and carries back window.
Yeah, 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 yeah. And it's not like they're just using like two by fours to throw them off and stuff like that, so it's kind of like terrible, I mean, in a lot of areas, I think they put them in, you know, like agricultural. They, they allow them in those agricultural areas and stuff like that, just because they're already large open fields, and if. No one else is using them for what you're to use for, then.
Not surprised that tractor didn't ask for a solar panels on there, but.
Yeah.
You know?
Oh.
The tractor supply.
Didn't they put it on? You know. There's a lot of, uh. Tax incentive.
Yeah.
You know, but that's. That wouldn't be an issue, that's not, we're talking about one.
Yeah.
That's a lot of power.
Yeah.
It's not. It's not some rooftop units. Centering in its field, so.
That'd be pretty, oh, we, we, we really thought, you know, with the accessory solar, nobody's gonna. Yes, you have the ability to sell some power back to your own use. But it won't turn your property into the principal use.
Yeah.
You, you can't put them on solar panels on the area, that's, and it's.
Yeah, where you're like, hey, the house. Yeah, where the house is worthless, but you're buying solar panels, yeah.
Christmas vacation. Your house plays up like this, like the Fourth of July when the sun comes down.
Yeah, okay, so. Um. The supervisors are looking for a recommendation. From the planning commission on this ordinance. Would someone like to make? Motion on it?
Well, I had read over it, I think, when I made the motion to accept this. The ordinance.
Or, or recommend it some.
Or recommend, yeah.
Recommend adoption.
Adoption.
Recommend adoption.
Yes.
Okay.
Adoption.
We have a motion, we have a second. Also, yeah, we have a motion, a second, any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Yeah. Yeah.
Uh, note is this, not, or responding, discussion, Carrie, you're up.
Okay, so, um, I get to move all of the video from the previous, uh. Five to ten, I, I have the old one to that. Uh, this one was mostly talking about, um. The size of trucks. And the front ends, and how we can't see people in the crosswalks, because the front end of trucks. Are larger, and that they feel that townships should try to take into consideration. If there's a big SUV or a big truck, and somebody's crossing. And we don't necessarily have markings for walking across the road where it should be. And it's recommending that we take more attention to that, the majority of, of accidents against the public is in these walkways. Or these crossing on roads where people can't see. Because of the way they're making cars now, they're too big. And the other one hasn't come through, and so it does constantly change.
Yeah, so, so they're recommending marking the crosswalks?
Yeah, it's making, it's making you aware that when you're planning your township, you have to consider. How far maybe they set back for the truck from the walk cross. So they could be seen, whereas like if you don't have a marking, you're pulling right up to the, the end of the road. And if someone's crossing, and your truck is so big, you're not gonna see that person walking, the vision, your vision is cut. So you can't see the road all the way across, so they're recommending that as we plan our townships out, that we take a look. At where that stop, uh, sign should, line should be for crossing the road, because you can't see. You know, even with the parking, the cars on the side of the, the walkways, how much vision does the truck there? Or SUV, like a, a one fifty, how much vision do they have? As opposed to where we have cars, you could see the road.
Hmm.
And now you can't.
Okay.
Right, nice, that's interesting, because we had somebody over here at the. What's this? Development right on the corner, Fox.
Foxconn, Summer Gun.
Foxconn, Summer Gun.
One of them.
Uh, and inquired about, why, why don't we push pend out to put crosswalks in there, but the problem is, we don't have sidewalks.
Yeah.
This person walks, they don't have a vehicle, but they walk, and it could, it could be a lot safer if there was a crosswalk.
Right.
Or you have a button to push to get it stopped all four ways when they were gonna cross, but it's one person who wants a crosswalk, and.
Hmm.
There are no sidewalks, which is a first big argument, she's walking on the street.
Right.
To get there, and.
Yeah.
I should know, it's a very interesting point, though, I mean, because that is, that's an unsafe place, and.
Sure.
More people, or, or families with children ended up living there. That wanted to run big noises with that.
It'd be nice if some dollars came in for that.
Yeah.
For, for sidewalks and, and crossings.
That would be, and you know, I was even thinking, like, you know, in our new developments, where we kind of allow some of that to be built. You know, this, the idea of striking across even where they turn in, and, you know, off of two oh nine, to give you a sense that, you know, whatever, probably. But it's hard when. As has been pointed out, like, we have those limited. You know, these sidewalks that exist for like a little area, and then, like, nothing, you know?
I know, in our community, they're shortening to the market, so that it can be seen. And also, it's good to see that the development, our putting in the sidewalks, because we are having an awful lot of people walking to all nine now.
Yeah.
You know, and, uh. It, it's, and the road is busy. With all the development that's going large, the traffic is tremendous out there from two oh nine. Especially as you even get out towards St. Roxton Center, I mean, it's just. Lots of delays and a lot of people walking.
Yeah.
I do have one other comment, on. The outstanding road crew that we have. The, the bridge off of Amex Road. I guess it might open tomorrow, or, or soon.
It's gonna be open Monday for school.
For Monday.
It could be open tomorrow.
It's, it's phenomenal, the job they did there.
That was.[1574.78]
I mean, they saved a hundred million dollars on it.
I hope that the uh, they, I know there are a lot of pictures and video taken of that, that was incredible. Work, I mean, those Amish guys that build those bridges, that came in thirty three pieces. Like, big boy Lego blocks.
Wait, so I I missed this, so they, we use some sort of Amish.
Big boy Lego blocks.
Parents, I didn't know anything this was happening.
I I I don't think I've heard that, yeah.
It's a concrete company out towards Lancaster somewhere.
And it's just one, like these big tribes, and then you just stack.
They they look like Lego blocks, and then they fit like one in. Almost like pipe, it's one inside the other, like PVC pipes. You guys know the terminology, it's got male and a female part to each piece, but yeah, thirty three concrete pieces. That it. Crane bigger than anyone's probably been ever in Middle Smithfield Township before came in to move.
Yeah.
Cause these things are, I don't know, how how many thousands and thousands of pounds, there were one come on a flatbed trailer. So even the logistics of moving this bridge.
So we just Lego built that.
Thirty three trips with flatbed trailers.
I completely missed that. Motion to adjourn.
Describing it as Lego building a bridge doesn't make you feel very secure.
When you're watching these guys. Looking at it, you can't believe.
And watching these.
To say it a different way.
Watching this guy with one hand direct this guy with this fifty ton crane. And they're, and and they're bringing that block down there right so close to the next one that they're pushing it in by hand.
Right, so and and that.
How did you put it together, did our move?
Well, the company put it together, but we, you know, we, they, we were part of the layout and the design and, you know.
Tore out the old bridge.
Problem was, the biggest issue was tearing the old bridge out, putting a new bridge in, it's simple, once they got the old one out, because we had, we had uh. I forget what it was, something, a couple of uh things went through the bridge.
Yeah, 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 well, like, there's all those.
We had water, we have sewer, we have cable, we have electricity.
What'd you guys do with that?
Off irrigation.
Yeah.
That went. Under the creek there.
Well, what did you guys do with that?
We pulled it all out of the bridge and now it's alongside the bridge.
Just like faxing?
No, under. It's open. School, yeah.
They, it's phenomenal, yeah, honest, you know, just. No, she got.
We wanted it to be a little straighter than what sending up being, it's got a pretty, you know, it's got a similar curve to what it had before. But because of where the water is at and the sewer is at, we couldn't, because we'd been building a bridge on top of the existing.
Yeah.
It's bad enough that we, you know, we hit sewer one day and hit water one day and. The water hit with the water main, it was a two week process really for that.
You know.
Would it end up causing?
We didn't build the bridge on Hollow, on Hollow Road, but that one is beautiful, have you seen it?
Yeah. But that's what I'm saying, we were talking like four million dollars for that, right?
Well, for that, I'm.
But it's now finished and it's gorgeous.
Right, but even under the bridge, now they they come, they're some, they're concrete squares. That are open, but even underneath, we have to resimulate the riverbed. Or the creek bed in there, consciously it would be concrete.
Hmm.
So they had to put. River stone in there and set it back, so they stored some of what they took out from under the old bridge.
Yeah.
And we had the conservation district there two weeks ago with an intern, he was there with an intern. And uh, Mots uh actually gave us an ad of what.
Right.
This is the way this is supposed to be done, and Corey was like. He thought for sure it was gonna be an example of. You know, this is what you don't do in turn, but he was good.
Oh, now I want that.
That's, he gotta go look at it, but if you ever get a chance, and hopefully we, hopefully Rachel and the team put together pictures and video of what they had, because. It's incredible, insane.
If you guys, I would, I I would love to see that presentation, you know, if you guys.
I was there when they did the the first day and they, the the crane was supposed to come with like the. Like a pulley or cantilever or something, so they swivel up and down, and they didn't send it with that. So they ended up having to pull the, pull the first piece back, the first piece was there, when they went to put the second one next to it, it wasn't at the same.
Level.
Level, so they had to go up, they had to come, take the other one back and put the chains down and just adjust them a little bit so they could get that pitch. So that when the next piece went, cause there's no way to move it up and down.
That's right, we are our house and I never, and because it was blocked, we never went back there to even look. It's like, right.
If we do the presentation, then uh. Don't do it for September.
It'll just be a bridge, it'll just be a bridge by the time you see it back.
I know, I wanna go right now, that's.
It's a bridge. It's a bridge right now.
Is the baby due in September?
So October first. We just looks like a gorgeous.
You know, in a month or so.
Right, right.
But she's doing October, you didn't tell us until last month.
Yeah.
Well, I, I mean.
There's some others.
Next meeting, September twenty eighth, motion to adjourn.
Make that.
Second, second.
Yeah.
Any comments? Favor, aye?
So just, I mean, we should keep in mind, what do we need for quorum, four?
Well, if we can find them. Every day, round four or five, five months, they. Alright, now.
Three.
Five.
Yeah.
Mark it with my name.
Alright.
That the next property that goes in, that one he was supervisor.
Oh, for my dad, my.
But we're not. Because anybody's filed.
Oh my God, you know, you know, that that whole process for us. Like the flashbacks of that, it was. It was, um, it was like, we had this, you know, up until probably the week before, I told you guys, it was. We were gonna have a mobile, we're gonna test. We were at. I I felt bad, it's like my dad had a friend from me. And he's gotten all these, it is. Um, cause I saw him, he pulled him over, he wasn't gonna settle here, but once you're. Once you get applied for these over, you can get travel. So we can go over and see what we would do here.
Yes.
Thank you.
We have to fill up this, no, no. We were at a hundred fifty. They were, they were literally letting us hang all month, they were like, cause you know, it started progressively getting bigger and bigger and bigger. And then she was like, you're gonna need a mobile rapid testing, and we're like, so we started budgeting all that, and then it all. Everything like in three weeks started kind of dissipate, you know, like the last thing dissipated off in your. And they were like, kind of more.
Oh, is that true?
I don't know why, it's like, you know, it's more. But they were more strict about it, and I was like.
Yeah, thank you.
This wasn't in the city portion, it was like right near, you know, like, man, you know, that area, so I was like, what are we talking about here? Like, everyone's got vaccines, I I worked like crazy to make sure, because the venue even told us that they would do those checks. They were being brutal with this up to the end, and I remember Pooja was like frustrated, because, I'm like, you know, I had, I had. That place was supposed, it was supposed to be a two hundred and fifty person wedding, and that's why, you know, my. But thank you, before everything else had happened, I was like, even when I called the I bay, when we were doing it, I was like, I'm sure, cause we have to fill two hundred and fifty people. And then then to go like the other way, and be like, whatever you want, I'd be like, don't really think of it, so it's like, our day, that's. And we were thinking. You know, but then, to go from them, forty minutes, if they're ready, use that two fifty, to them being like, we might hold you to one twenty five, how old are you?